There is the board of the district. Roll call. Okay, roll call. Mrs. Cannonini.
Here.
Mr. Franco.
Here.
Mr. Duff.
Present.
Mr. Little.
Here.
Mrs. Vines.
Here.
Mrs. Wright.
Here.
Mrs. Rogers.
Here.
Um, please stand for the allegiance and... ...the current lieutenant that passed away, Dr. McKenna. Mrs. Stye was a elementary teacher in the district for thirty-seven years until her retirement in June 2008. Michael Muscone, former Board of Education member, passed away on June 9th. Mr. Muscone was elected to the Board in April of 2010 until August 2012 and was an active member of the Middletown community. Retired Detective Lieutenant Joseph Capriati, proud member of the Middletown Police Department, almost three decades passed away on June 6th. Mr. Capriati was a lifelong resident of Middletown and served the community throughout the events of 9/11. He also participated for many years in the torrid force, which honors the victims of 9/11 by keeping their memory alive. We extend our condolences and respect to the Stye, Muscone, and Capriati families. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
public comment period. So just so you are aware, this is a special public comment period and the duration will be thirty minutes and therefore we have to limit per person to three minutes. And in consideration of the time constraints, the Board will not be responding to any comments or questions at this time. And because the Board wants to ensure that the public, those full thirty minutes is dedicated to the public being able to, you know, provide any kind of comments that they have and any concerns that they have. And while the public, while someone's commenting or if the Board members are speaking, please do not interrupt. Thank you.
Questions? Can they read the resolution? Can they read the resolution down before commenting? Can we please read the resolution down before the committee receives it?
Just to clarify for the agenda, the item for the before and after care program selection has been withdrawn, but the Board is going to be acting on the resolution this evening for the authorization of the procurement of before and after care services. There will be an RFP issued, advertised, and evaluated, and a word will be made after that competitive contracting process is complete. So that will be the resolution for what will be going on this evening, as well as the other items that were previously listed for our special voting meeting, which are on the agenda. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the microphone for public comments, our special public comment.
Good evening. Terrence Wall, neighbor over in Holmdun, New Jersey. I'm speaking as a resident, not as an elected official or any official capacity at all. I want to applaud the Board of Education for considering the matter that was on the agenda this evening and tabling it. I think that's exemplary and shows the leadership of the Board. I'm going to then quickly shift to the mechanics of the timing of the resolution that you're contemplating, whether or not it would be for the following year due to the disruptive nature of enrollments and attracting and retaining quality employees. And this is obviously to Middletown matter. To what extent the sequencing is more conducive to have it for the following year, so you can have a robust competitive contracting period, you need to appoint your committee, you need to set up your rubric, you need to advertise, you need to have a response, you need to have the bids come in, you may have your proposals come in, you need to set up an interview process for the folks that you wish to have come in, whether it has Board members included in the process or not. I would encourage you to have Board members from the respective subcommittees involved in that interview process. At that point, you would then be scoring the program through the competitive contracting process, which is a very specific legal process, as you know. And then you have to look at considering at what point you would be contemplating action as Middletown Board of Education during a public meeting. That would likely be towards the end of August or the middle of August. If you went out for twenty days, you'd be advertised immediately, you're coming back around July 15th, you're going to have to set up interviews with the respective folks, you'll have to determine who the finalists are, and you're going to have to score it, and you're going to have to qualify it according to law. So you may want to contemplate whether this robust, thoughtful, interesting iterative process is conducive to folks that would already have their children signed up already.
Yes, absolutely.
Rather than taking that process and perfecting it for the following school year. So my recommendation as a guest here would be to carry forward with this wonderful process. I think you showed the leadership tonight. I would strongly consider the practical implications from a training and talent, human resources perspective, and the enrollment process that would be closed typically now, then shoehorning it into an August compressed, disrupted timeframe. So thank you very much for your time, and I will see the floor to your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Keith Rella. I live in Leonardo, New Jersey. My son is a third grader, in September, at Leonardo Grade School. My daughter will be entering the school as a kindergartner. For the last two years, I've served as Vice President and PTA at Leonardo Grade School. And in my professional capacity, I'm an Assistant to the Business Administrator in the Town Trivial Park. I've worked at all three levels of government in the state of New Jersey, and I've worked in the private sector as well as the nonprofit sector, so I'm well aware of how working folks work and appreciate your service to the community. My first question, and I know I can't pull the board, but I'm going to ask it anyway, is if any of the Board members utilized the before and after care program, because I think that's an important distinction to be made. And that's not to say that if you don't, you don't understand what the working families who utilize the program, both in why we rely so heavily on it. That question having been asked, I do want to emphasize what this speaker before me had said. This process is clearly flawed. It hasn't been, otherwise we wouldn't be in the situation we're in tonight. That said, parents should have been enrolled two months ago at least in the after care program. We should have had our financial ducks in a row. We should have had the confidence in being able to convey to our children what will be going on in September, especially for a kindergartner, a five-year-old who's already entering a new situation. We can't wait another day, and we certainly can't wait until August, which I think, again, understanding how this process works, is conservative. You need to extend the contract for the YMCA for one year. That's the responsible thing to do. And then, if you want to go into a deliberate and thoughtful, open RFP process, that's fine. And by open, I hope that the stakeholders, namely, the working families of this community, are included in that process. Because we are the folks who take advantage of this program. We are the ones who rely on the people who are employed by this program, who are the ones who have to have faith, we're at work every day, that our kids are comfortable and well cared for. When you conduct that fair, open, deliberate RFP process, I would recommend that you include the stakeholders, and that you not go through it in an rushed process to ensure that we have care for our children in September. You should extend the process, excuse me, extend the contract for the YMCA for one year, and then go through the process as you see fit, and I trust that you do it in a way where we won't end up in the same situation a few months from now. I thank you again for your service, and I really hope that you do the right thing for the working families of this community, because I assure you, if you don't, we will seek out representatives who will do the right thing for the working families of this community. Thank you.
My name is Andrew Kellum. I'm a Middletown resident, right in the Ford Fairview area of town. I'd also like to begin by applauding the motion to suspend any immediate judgment that I put back out. I'd also like to leave a second to thank the few of you on the Board that I reached out to and have received immediate responses, and descriptive explanatory responses, which made me feel that you're open-minded and you're considerate in where you vote from here. And that means a lot, really does, as a parent. And that's really what I'm here as first and foremost. You know, I'm here as a parent. I'm here second as a community member, and thirdly, I'm here to support the Y, and I'll put that out there right from the start. I believe in the Y. I believe that the Y is an extension of our community. I believe that we're in it together with the Y for our community. That's why a partnership with the Y is so powerful and is so meaningful. I believe that that extension leads itself to all things. When I'm looking for a babysitter, when I'm looking for anyone who's going to watch my kid, the first question I ask is, who is that person? What do they represent? I know what the Y represents. When you talk about the branding of the Y, they're a community-based, non-profit organization. Let's take the start of that, community-based. Their sole responsibility is to the community. That's sole responsibility. And then the second part of that, not-for-profit, what does that mean? It means not in it for the money. It means that we stand with an organization who's so interested in returning every dollar spent, that our community, in partnership with us, that's what they want to do. The money that we put into that product and in that organization is coming back to our community, maybe not always directed to the schools, but in the supportive programs and the embodiment of what the Y is and what it represents to all of the people that live in the Middletown School District. So what about the kids? What does it do for our kids? Well, I'm not looking for a placeholder for protein. I'm not looking for somewhere to dump my kid. I'm not looking for a place that just provides a, you know, somewhere for her to be when I can't. I want my kid to be nurtured. I want my kid to be developed. These are the core values that the Y brings to the table. Honesty, caring, respect, responsibility. I want her just to be there. I want her to feel connected. I want her to develop a community conscience. I want her to be inspired. I know, I look around this room and I see Y employees, and I think, there's every person in this room could probably tell us a story of inspiration, tell us a story of someone from our community that inspires us and makes us feel invested in our community, because that's what the Y does. That's why I feel so strongly about this. So when all these things happen and we tie them all together, we really have to consider, what are we doing and why are we doing it? We're doing it to build a stronger community. We're doing it to return the investment into our community. And so what I feel is that whenever we invest in things that don't represent our community, we erode our community. When we invest in community-based, not-for-profit organizations like the Community YMCA, we invest in the best interest of our children, and I hope that you all come to that conclusion.
My name's Tom Wilkins. I'm a lifelong Middletown resident and a lifelong member of the YMCA, currently a YMCA volunteer, and thank you for getting to this speaker tonight. And of course, I also want to thank everyone on the Board for your service to the constituents of this town and all the volunteering you do as a member of this Board. I understand all the things that you guys do because I had the opportunity, obviously, to represent this town when I served on the Township Committee in Middletown. And I also had the opportunity to represent Middletown at the 2000 Olympic Games in Sydney, Australia, where I wore a Middletown USA shirt under my Olympic sweats while I stood on the medal podium in this Board of Swimming case. Anyone wasn't aware of that? You know, I'm still involved with this town and also with the schools in an indirect way. For the past fourteen years, I've actually spoken to every fifth-grade student that's graduated from the Project Plus program, as I've been the keynote speaker at their graduation service every year. And I think I'm more recognized for that Project Plus participation than they are for my Olympic medal and also for my time on the Town Committee. But the reason I'm here tonight is because I'm really just a big believer in the Community YMCA's mission, their core values, and everything that they stand for. The YMCA has had an enormous impact on my life, not only as a place that provided the foundation of my swimming career that started at age six and learned the swim programs over at the Y, but also as the environment where I learned all of the traits that I needed to be successful in whatever it is that I was pursuing or involved in, whether it was Olympic medal, whether it was a degree from Stanford University, whether it's building a successful business, or nurturing a healthy family. Some of those traits are positive attitude and a sense of self-worth, the value of productive work ethic, persistence, and the need for a support network. So my experience with the YMCA had such a profound impact on me that I couldn't wait to get my children involved with the programs, and I currently spend much of my time giving back as a volunteer coach with the swim team. The YMCA's values of caring, honesty, and respect, and their deep commitment to nurturing the wellness of every child in their surrounding community is something that should be promoted in every possible way. That is why this organization should be afforded every possible opportunity to be as involved as it can be with this town and with this community, that the programs and services that care for our kids should not be outsourced to an out-of-state for-profit entity, and that I hope that the children of this district and community have the opportunity for their YMCA to impact their lives in the way it has impacted mine. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Katie Doyle. I've always been at Madison School and had a son who helps out who does a lot of care program. I also work for the Y. Thank you for postponing your decision on this and for letting us discuss this. I know it is a change of the usual time that you spend in the platform meeting, so I appreciate it. When Anna was in second grade, she had one of those big projects due, and I was walking in with a postboard and all of her stuff, and these girls came up and they're like, "Hi, Anna." They grabbed her stuff and they helped her go into the classroom. After school that day, I asked her, you know, "How did you know them?" And she said, "Aftercare." And, you know, at Fall Festival and at this activity and that activity, she knows all of these people. And I'm like, "How do you know them?" She said, "Aftercare." So she's gotten to know all of these children that she would never ever know without being in aftercare, and I think it's fantastic, because she's gotten to develop all of these opportunities and all of these relationships in this unstructured environment. And part of the reason I sent her for an extra day is so that she has that opportunity. The Y gives her what she wants and what I want for her. It gives her the opportunity for authentic play in a safe environment, the opportunity to learn, to negotiate, to compromise, to initiate play, to advocate for herself, to mediate. I'm not speaking for everybody. I can only speak for myself, but I know that at least you're on the impact page and that you've heard similar conversations. But I'm not asking for a structured environment of separated classes. I'm not asking for more academic rigor of, you know, disguised play. They spend six and a half hours of their day in academics. They need time to run around. They need an environment where they are cared for, people that I know that I can trust by an agency that I know and I can trust at a price that I can afford to pay. These are the people that I trust, the caregivers that will be offered positions in this new company. I need to ask, when do people become exchangeable commodities? What happens to their loyalty? Some of these people have worked for the Y for five, ten, fifteen years. They're committed to the values of working for a nonprofit organization and what that means and what that stands for. You're asking them to choose between working for a company that they love or working for people that they love, and that's not possible. Most of these people work in multiple districts, and they will stay with the Y. So what you're offering with the family in our district is false hope. The idea of before and after care was born in the same idea as offering breakfast or offering lunches. It's meant to meet the needs of struggling families, to support families that can't meet the needs of their family without the support from an outside system, getting your children to a safe environment.
Thank you for your comment. At this time, you have gone over the three-minute limit. I'm sorry? If you want to make one last sentence, that's fine, but I have to keep trying.
Sorry. Okay. Uh, I'm sorry. I think that collecting a fee from this agency is impaired because they supply services to families who can't otherwise provide those services to their children, and we need to understand that they are nonprofit, they can't contribute profit.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Florback, six-year-old. I am a current Middletown resident. I've been a Middletown resident since the year 2004, and I'm actually a teacher at Thompsonville School. When I came back to teaching, when I came back to the world of teaching, I started a village school. I had three elementary school children at the time. My children are now in college, a senior in high school, and now going into eighth grade. So I did not need before and after care. By the time I started working, I did. And I actually had someone come into the home because I thought that was the best for my kids. And that was about the same exact time that the Y came to become part of the before and after school program. And when it was talked about, it was a sense of community. And I actually was moved to Port名, and I got to meet the Y people, and the way in which it was promoted was a sense of community, bringing communities together, nonprofit, and it felt good. And when I got to see what it looked like at Port名, I thought, you know what? This is where I want my children to be. So they were at Thompsonville School at the time.
And I believe Ms. Lyndis is back there.
And I enrolled them in before and after care there, and they had a wonderful experience. I think the biggest thing, taking it from there, bringing part of that community, I became a member of the Y, and my children swim for the Y. So it became bigger than just before and after care. It was a model for my children to see the value and importance of their community. It was not about the money at the time. It was actually cheaper for me to have someone come into the home at that point in time than to send three kids before and after care. It wasn't about the money. It was about that model for my children to be part of community, be part of something bigger. Because I think the goal that we have is to have our children come back after college to be successful members of our community, and what better will it have to sound like? And that's all that I really want to say. It's not something that I needed to say because I'm worried about my children for next year. It's something that I think is a value and a core of our community.
Hi, my name is Michael Patagney. I live at Two Kingdom Clubhouse Drive in Middletown. I'm a parent of two. I have a kindergarten that just finished in the second grade that just finished at Army Elementary. Love the school district. I'm not leaving town. Love it, okay? I think it's great. I think you all do a great service. You're not paid here to be on the Board, and I appreciate your time tonight. I'm glad that you're referring to the city, but I know why we're here. This is a dollar and cents issue. Ms. Rogers, you sent out an email saying, "Oh, the group, we're going to have a $7 million short ball in the state," right? Okay. This is a big school district. This is a big town that takes in a lot of tax revenue, and I understand $7 million is a lot of money, but there's other ways that I think you could look for that. And these are kids that we're all talking about from five to 10 years old. These are very small children at a very tender age, and they go to this... My kids go to before and after care, and a lot of the people that work for the Y work in the school, out of our parents. I have a son that's a special needs student, okay? And one of his parents, two of his parents, has worked, have worked in this program and still do, okay? They know the students. They know how to help them with their homework. They know when they're having issues, when to back off, when to help them, when to give them the attention that they need. Now, I know the world doesn't revolve around my children, but you know what? I think we have a duty here to our kids to do the right thing, and I think bringing in a for-profit company to do this, it's just a bad idea. You have a community-based organization like the YMCA who's entrenched in this community and all surrounding communities, and who do a lot for the Board besides after care and before care. I think we can all agree on that, right? Brief counseling, other things, okay? I want to sign my kid up tonight. How many parents want to sign this kid up tonight? How many moms and dads are planning for the next school year now? We're not against that. I want the Y forever, don't get me wrong, okay? But look at where we are now. We're in late June. You have 20 more days. We're going to get together, is that correct? I mean, this is, it's not good for the families. You know, we're voters. We're taxpayers here. We just want what's fair, and we pay a lot in taxes, okay? And we love the school district. I think a lot of people, probably everybody here, likes this school district. Let's keep it that way. Let's do the right thing, and I'll tell you what, I know it's dollars and cents, but let's put the kids first. Let's keep it that way. I appreciate your time, okay? I really do, and I appreciate what you do, all of you, okay? I'm a Board member at Cherry Tree Village. I know it's a hard job. Thank you. Let's just do the right thing here, and I can't wait to talk.
Hi, so I have my laptop. I'm Erin Oldershaw. I've got two kids. I'm in Livermore Plate District. I'm just going to read what I wrote so I can stick it to my three minutes. I nailed it, okay. And thank you guys for the opportunity to speak. So for the past five years, I've had the privilege of having the YMCA provide my three children with after care and before care. So over those years, I've had luckily 1,800 interactions with the YMCA, 900 drop-offs, and 900 pickups, give or take. So when I first heard about this potential replacement, I reached out to the Board, so thank you guys for that quick response. I sent a letter, and here's a quick excerpt. In the five years that we've used them, my children have had the most amazing experiences. I find them staff consistently engaged, nurturing and caring for our children. They have my utmost trust and respect as a parent. Every day I go and the facilitators are leading them in new activities, and they have this magical way of ensuring that everyone is engaged. Some of the children love sports. They always have a game going on. Some love arts and crafts, and they always have new activities for them to try. Some love song and dance, and it's always a way for them to play music and sing. I have no idea how they balance at all, but every day I walk in for drop-off and pickup, and the children are happy and busy and involved. There's also an incredible sense of mentorship that the older kids are encouraged to engage with the younger kids, and my children have really flourished in this environment. They've grown social skills exponentially through their participation in this program. The magic of the Y is that safe but free environment that they provide. The children, I watch them, they self-select into these activities at a time and a pace that is right for them, and that's the magic. We have an incredible school with an incredible curriculum, but what we don't have is enough time for our kids to actually be kids. With the increased demand on their performance, starting as soon as kindergarten, the opportunity for them to just play and learn and navigate and become good citizens in a safe environment is paramount. So for me... And that's the magic. We have an incredible school with an incredible curriculum. But what we don't have is enough time for our kids to actually be kids. With the increased demand on their performance, starting as soon as kindergarten, the opportunity for them to just play and learn and navigate and become good citizens in a safe environment is paramount. So for me, before and after care should be a place where they go to play, build community, learn to interact at multiple grade levels and different types of students. It should be a place where they're encouraged to do all of this at their own pace, and that's what the Y does so well. So I can't speak for everybody in this room, but after 1,800 visits, I've seen a lot of magic in that place. So I'm just gonna share a few of my favorites. So I watched a third grader teach my five-year-old how to fish. I watched my fourth grade daughter, who hadn't played sports since the age of four, become competent and left to join a basketball team and fly football. I watched a child who lost a parent last year sing and dance in that room every afternoon by herself, and slowly, maturely, her smile and her spirit came back. And then last year, I watched some children who lost almost everything come and join the program. They found a place where they could play, they could make friends. They learned how to blow balloons, shoot baskets, and most importantly, that they felt safe in that.
Thank you for your comments. Can I just add one sentence? You're gonna take it from somebody else. Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jessica Verbiglioni. I'm a mom of children in the Momma's Elementary, right around the corner. And I have a first grader who's gonna be in second grade, and I do have a little one who'd be there this year, but she's in the pre-k program. That is phenomenal, it was Becky. But I want to thank you for giving me the time to speak. But what I want you to realize, in this room, is working-class families. Everyone here is using the Y, because both parents are working. We can't do pickup, we can't do drop-off. And when I investigated and I looked into this profit organization that's looking to come in, it's gonna increase my cost for my kids to be provided care. An average of $33 a month, just for one hour, for one hour. If I need to do before and after care, my increase for the year goes up $1,500 for my two kids, eventually, when they're before and after. That is a strain on the families in this room. We're the ones who are working so that we can live in this wonderful district and pay the taxes to be here with our kids and have this wonderful education for them. So I really hope that you guys look into your hearts and see that you need to extend the contract to the YMCA one more year, at least one more year. Because I'm sitting here in a panic. What do I do in September? At this point, who's taking care of my kids when I have to go to work and educate other kids? Because I'm in the education field, and I know how important it is. So you guys really need to take this time and find it in your hearts to extend that contract one more year, and give us the opportunity to sign up our kids tonight if we can. So thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Deanna Chlan. I'm a middle town resident this year. I have three young children. My son goes to before and after care. And I'm a teacher. It makes my life so much easier. He's so much happier. So much happier. You know, and if you could just extend the Y care just one more year at least, I mean, it would just make it so much easier for me to know that my son and my daughter's going there next year, that two of my kids have a place to go, and that I can sign up, you know, tomorrow, and I know that I don't have to worry. Because that's a lot for me to think about, you know, what's gonna happen when I have to go back to work in September? But if I know that my kids are signed up, you know, I feel secure. They're very flexible there, as far as doing an extra hour after care instead of full three hours. I had an emergency at work the other day, and I called them and I said I'm not gonna be able to make it on time. They said, no problem, you know, we'll let him know. And they told them, they said, your mom's not coming, you know, she had an emergency, but she'll be here, you know, in an hour. And knowing that, that makes me feel very, you know, I told them about Y Care, and he goes, no, I love Ms. Lynda. He enjoys going to Y Care every day. So please, think about considering sending them in. You really need to agree.
Hi, my name's Devin. I kick my oldest daughter, I go to Livermore Plaza. You were here, and you're at that mall because of the book.
I'm sorry, can you just give us your last name too?
Okay, here it is. I'm speaking here today because my daughter loves before and after care. When I pick her up, she doesn't want to leave. Mommy, just a moment. The other reason I wanted to speak tonight is because our youngest child was very ill. Last year, there were many times he was in hospital, 10 days at a time. I would call them, never once did they come in. They said, morning up, someone in the hospital at nine o'clock at midnight. I'd call them, morning up, no problem. Bring her in, we'll take her. They made her happy. She's already sad, her brother's in hospital, and not coming home. And they made her smile. The other thing I wanted to bring up too, is, like some people said here before, the costs for me would go up exponentially. So we only pay for what we use. I drop off at 7:45, I pick up at four o'clock. I pay $162 a month. I looked at the company that is to put the bid on tonight, my cost would go up to $291 a month. That's a difference of $130 for one child per month. And we have another child that will be joining River Plaza in the next few years. I don't know, that's not a lot of money to you, but to our family, a working-class family, $130 a month is devastating. So please reconsider and think about the service that you're giving to the working-class family, and the fact that our children love, love this program. Thank you so much for your time.
My name is Lauren Hawke. I'm a resident of the Y at the Middletown Elementary School. One, we, I think, if you have a parent here that would like to speak, we ask for either more time to speak, or another session to be able to speak as well. But I'll be quick. I literally got off a bus, because I live in New York City, like a half hour ago, just so I could be here. My husband works in the city too. We would not survive without before and after care. We would not survive without Lisa, being able to call her and say, when is it late? Or grandma's coming to pick up, or man is coming to pick up, or can we switch a day here, can we switch a day there? The last person to hear my husband live is single father, and the discount that they gave him is the only way that we can further our careers. And to the point now that we both, you know, got better jobs, and we're up, and now we're about to buy a home in Middletown and really settle here permanently. And without this option, last call, we actually, my poor husband sent him the paperwork late from after care, and we were waitlisted for three months. And we were, it was a dark time in my house. We were pulling all strings and all favors, and honestly, he hated it. He hated coming home, because there's no one else there to hold with. There's no one to talk to, besides me, and I have to work. They're at home. And so when he got back in the program, he was thrilled, because he got to hang out with his friends every day. He actually went to after care to the last day of school this year, because he wanted to hang out with his friends. So this service, beyond that, we're just counseling, we're just, we're here at the summer camp, and, you know, I don't know about the other parents here, we know what we're doing every moment for the rest of the summer. Our summer's planned, and we don't know what we're doing as a program. And everyone here is freaking out. We need a plan. I need to know what we're doing. I need to know if I need to ask myself, is it home permanently? Like, there's a lot that we're doing in the back end of stuff. So we just asked to reconsider, to wish it's another year, to give it time to learn, to give it time for the parents to be able to know what we're doing the next month, the next year, whatever. So I think if we have time, we'll make the decision, and here's the next one.
This would be the last comment as we are approaching. Do you have one more comment, Angelis, please? Just one more. She goes-
I'll add one last comment right now.
I'm Lori Gogadz, the president and CEO of the YMCA.
Mic's off.
Hello, that's not fair, don't start the pop yet, man, start. I'm Lori Gogadz, the president and CEO of the YMCA. I want to thank you all for your service, good service to this organization, to the community, to Middletown. I want to thank you for the partnership over the last 10 years that you've had with the YMCA. I want to thank Dr. George for being a phenomenal partner to us. It was one year ago that we were in this room, and the YMCA was being celebrated and honored as the Community Partner of the Year with your district. Not just the before and after care, but the therapeutic counseling services that we do provide to students in your district, the Bay Shore Family Success Center, all the good work the YMCA is doing. We believe we're part of your family. We're part of the Middletown families. We're not just a nonprofit organization, but we feel like we're really one of your people. We're part of this community. We believe in it, and we just want to know, want you to know how much we appreciate this long, rich partnership we've had with you over the years. This whole process has been disappointing. When I got the call last week from Dr. George that there was a consideration to go in another direction, and the YMCA wouldn't no longer be the provider, we were surprised, we were shocked, and we were disappointed. Back in March, my team had a meeting with Dr. George, and when we heard there was going to be an RFP, it was pretty much presented to us as just regular normal business right now, just like we would to get a copy machine or anything else, it's a standard process for us. We were not expecting that this was going to be such an issue, that we had the potential to lose this program. We did not understand the magnitude that you were considering going in another direction. We didn't understand that there were quality issues or any concerns about spaces that we were utilizing in your buildings. We're currently expanded spaces. Since March, we've licensed all those other classrooms in your buildings. So if that's an issue, that we're not expanded beyond one room, we're running in more than, we're operating in more than one room right now. The other thing we're hearing is that between 8:15 and 8:45, we need an option. We need that option in the next provider. Well, we do that for you right now. We didn't put in the proposal for next year, because it's not heavily utilized. It wasn't really popular. But if you do need it, and that's important, we will bring it right back. We want you to know that we will resolve any issues. This was a surprise to the YMCA that we weren't being considered. Any issues that we've been having, we want to resolve. We want to be your partner. You know, the therapeutic counseling services, the homework help that we give for the families, the family prevention programs at Bay Shore Family Success Center, the Traumatic Loss Coalition. Last year, a student of yours was unfortunately, there was a death, there was a home fire. He's connected with Dr. George, and the YMCA responded, right? The Traumatic Loss Coalition is the YMCA. We head that up. We are your partners. We're here to support and strengthen community. I've been doing this work for 26 years. I've started my career in childcare, and it means the world to me. I am new. I understand that there's been issues with quality in the past. Those days are behind us. I've been here a year and a half of this, with a brand-new team. We have a bright future ahead. We mean business. We want to support you. We're a nonprofit, and every bit of work we do goes back into your community.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you all for your time. And I have to say that over the last couple weeks, we've been receiving emails on this topic, and everyone has been very kind and very respectful, and I really appreciate that. I do need to open the microphone for agenda items only, so agenda items other than this Okay, seeing nobody come to the mic, we need to move on to the resolution. I need a motion to adopt the resolution. Would you like to reread it? Okay.
This will be a relation to a procurement of a concession for before and after care program services for the Middletown County Public School District for the 2019-2020 school year. To continue to meet the needs of our school community, the district will solicit proposals with a request for proposals to process before and after school program services for schools of the Middletown County Public Schools. Estimated value of this concession is $1.5 million, and the district will request a proposal for after care in exchange for the use of the district's elementary school facilities. The award of the contract will be based upon most advantageous price and other factors outlined in the request for proposal, wherein the estimated cost being incurred by Middletown County Public Schools as part of this concession in this contract will be a one of the competitive contracting process.
I need a motion to adopt this resolution.
Submove. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Do we need a roll call for this, Amy? Okay, roll call vote.
Mrs. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. DeFranco?
Stay.
Mr. Donlin?
Yes.
Mr. Dymo?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mrs. Sinewes?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to facilities. I need a motion for A1.
Submove.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? I need a motion for personnel. Three. One through. Four. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
So at this time, I'd like to introduce Carrie Altavines, who is going to be the new assistant principal of the Middletown staff. Carrie is a all-time employee, 17 years, and now is going to be teacher leader, and we are excited that she's joining the Y's training team.
Congratulations. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn the special voting meeting and move on to our open pre-meeting workshop. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Moving on to our committee report. Our strategic planning presentation.
We're gonna go into a strategic planning committee update. This impacts every resident of Middletown, and it would be very disappointing to see our Middletown residents come to support our schools, and then we want to talk about the future of our schools. I know that people are busy. I absolutely know that we're all very busy. It could be a long night. But I do ask anybody who was available to stay for the rest of the meeting, especially if you've never been to a board bed meeting, please do stay. We invite you to stay, watch the presentations, and understand how the process works. Thank you.
This is the presentation we have tonight. So I just want to give a little bit of a recap of what's happened so far, so there's not any understanding of what's happened. We, for a process, we selected a company called Schoolhouse Strategies. Very talented group with its own support and best of this process. So so far, we met, the board met with Schoolhouse Strategies on May 28th. We reviewed a high-level approach to strategic planning. They have sort of outlined how they do things, privately directed, and they do things. We discussed steering committee, how to get community involvement. We also reviewed a high-level timeline, of how long this type of process is going to take, or the steps that we should look at. So, November 9th, the board committee met again. We reviewed those from that meeting on May 28th, the Schoolhouse, some of the other Schoolhouses, just amongst board members. We developed a draft proposal for a steering committee, a community engagement model, and an overall outline of the process, which is in this presentation tonight. We also talked about some questions and follow-ups for the entire board, and also for the Schoolhouse Strategies. So what we did, we just tried to recap, sort of figure out what we're gonna do. There's a lot of pieces to this. This is the, you know, we did the last process, this was five years ago, so I think we learned some lessons of how maybe to do this a little bit differently, maybe a little bit more effectively. We'll have to see, we'll have to input from various different groups. So if you want to go to the next thing, so this is the draft timeline in phases. There's basically three phases, summer, fall, winter, and spring of next year. In the summer, we're calling that the planning phase, basically take off the formation of structure, kind of what we're doing now. We have to start drafting surveys and agendas for future meetings, and then we have to get into T-Site chapters, which will be discussed later, on later slide, slide seven, talking about the various things that we're going to be touching on. In the fall/winter, we're gonna start the process of outreach, which means we're going to discuss the current state and our mission. We're gonna start talking about goals and metrics, and this is gonna be through community forums, which are- community forums, which will be open to the public. Last time around, so we'll give out, we're looking at probably about three meetings and we'll discuss in detail those meetings in, in later slides. And the key part's going to be to roll out the online survey. And I think that's something that we're going to have to talk about with the community in terms of generally our results when it comes to, for getting survey, surveys filled out by parents. I think it's very important, the survey will probably be a simple one, but I think it's very important for folks to get the input into these things because one thing that Schoolhouse Strategies has to provide to us is the ability to take that data and sort through it. Now I'm going to hand it off to, I think, Chris Wright's going to discuss a little bit more details about these three phases.
Okay, so on the next slide, I'm just going to go into a little bit more detail in terms of what you just saw with the timeline. I think one thing that we just want to continue to stress to everybody is this really needs to be a complete project that's done by the community and this is all aspects of our community, not just parents with students enrolled in our schools. And we just want to keep reiterating that as we go through this, this is not just our process. We want this to be a process of then Middletown. So one of the things that we're going to be spending a lot of time on during the summer, which is the Strategic Action Plan Steering Committee and also with Schoolhouse Strategies, is really what our process is wanting to be. We have already been talking a little bit about this amongst ourselves, but really we're going to use Schoolhouse Strategies as experts in terms of how to reach out to the community, what's the best way to get all of this information, because again, forums are great and we really hope that each of the forums that we have are very well-intended, but we know we're not going to be able to catch everybody in doing that. So what are the other ways that we can actually reach out and get your input as we go through this process? One of the other things that we're really going to be looking at and sort of building upon, we're not going to be doing this from scratch. I wasn't a part of the last planning committee as a new board member, but I did read the reports of the state and the district that was done five years ago. So we're going to take those reports, review those with Schoolhouse Strategies and then sort of build upon them or add upon them. We're not going to start from the beginning. The other thing we really want to do is really think about what information we want to get from the public forums and what is the best way to do that. And so we're going to be working with Schoolhouse Strategies to create those agendas and then as John was saying, really figure out what type of survey, what's the best survey that we can actually get for the whole district and then develop that and come out with our timeline in terms of when we're going to have that out to the public, what's the time for responses and then get it back in time for us to actually go through the data with Schoolhouse Strategies. So you can go to the next slide. During the fall and the winter, this will be when we have gap for forums. Right now, I think we're thinking about having three. It seems like the right number. We can review that again as we sort of sit down with Schoolhouse Strategies, if that's right or wrong, add or subtract. I think that's where we're sort of landing at the moment. The one thing to sort of realize too is that these forums are going to build upon each other. So it's not just going to be, you know, the same information that's specified each forum. Hopefully we can take what we get from the first one, which would really just be sort of, I think, trying to talk about the process and starting to get ideas and then build it in the next two that we have. And then, come to the big phase, we're writing the actual plan. This is where Schoolhouse Strategies, we're really going to be relying on them, as John was saying, in terms of actually going through the data and trying to really parse out what we're getting from that. And then it will be our job basically to write the plan. This is something that's going to be a broad conversation clearly with the key stakeholders that you'll see in a further slide in terms of all the other different groups throughout our district that we really want to reach out to through this entire phase to also get their input. And then once we sort of start to compile all this data, it will then be the Strategic Action Plan Committee that will be writing the proposal along with Schoolhouse Strategies, which will then be presented to the entire board.
I think it works. Yes, okay. So we've mentioned a few times about our stakeholders and our steering committee and what the organization will look like, but what we put on the slide here, we tried to represent that hierarchically. One of the hallmarks of our extended discussion around strategic planning going all the way back to when I was a new board member last year was that we wanted a transparent process that was open to the entire community. So we sat down to determine how to structure both our steering committee as well as our representative committees. What we wanted to do is we wanted to approach that with the most broad, open mind that we could, and so we believe that we've done that. At the very top of our engagement is the Board of Education. So that's not this committee and that's not the administration. It is a full nine-person board invested with the decision-making and the responsibility. Below that sits the Strategic Planning Committee with equal representation of the Board of Education as well as four representatives of the administration. And then below that is really everybody else. So we sort of bifurcated this into school representatives and then community representatives and we tried to be as inclusive as possible, but I want to caveat this by saying that if there is a group that is not listed here, if you were looking for the Knights of Columbus and you listed here, we will reach out to the Knights of Columbus. We are not here to exclude anybody. What we are trying to do is be as broad as possible, cast the widest net, because as was said before, this is not just about the children. This is not just about the facilities. This is not just about the curriculum. This is about the township. We are all invested in our school district as residents of this township and we want people who are here to become invested in this process with us. So we will have representatives from PCC and President's Council as well as representatives from our private schools in the township, the friends of the different learners, the VOTECs and Magnets. Our students will be represented. We also will be reaching out to the township committee. Our sports leagues use our facilities heavily. They should have a seat at the table. The senior citizens groups should have a seat at the table. Any of our civic organizations and basically any other organization. So the goal is to be as broad as possible so that we have those forum meetings, everybody feels like they have a seat at the table and by engaging Schoolhouse Strategies, we are ensuring that everybody gets heard. Their role is to listen, to aggregate the data and present it to the Strategic Planning Committee so that we can understand it and get through it. We're expecting a mountain of feedback and we definitely need the help to get through it. Last slide, thanks. So where do we go from here? We are spending our summer on this. So July, August and September, the steering committee will be meeting with Schoolhouse Strategies. We will be establishing a strategic planning email box and we will also be setting up social media accounts. We want to build an electronic funnel. So we want to have a Facebook page. We want to have a Twitter account. We want to be wherever the people are, but we want people to respond through the email box so that we can have Schoolhouse Strategies start to go through the mountain of responses that we expect. We want to start brainstorming our survey questions and topics. And this is something that John and Devin brought up, that, you know, we need to build these surveys. We are starting from, you know, the baseline here. We want to understand what to ask. And so it was on the prior slide, we'll be socializing some of our ideas with all those stakeholders on the previous slide to make sure that we have the best survey, that we're asking the right questions. We have our preconceived notions, but we are not everybody else. And so I think just to wrap it up, I don't know, John, if you just want to just say a couple of words, you're okay?
I just want to, I just want to make sure everybody understands, just to break it down to you in a way that is really understandable. What we're looking to do here is to get the whole community involved with the forums and with those surveys. From there, we'll be taking it to the steering committee, which is the four of us, who, these great people, we got it on a Sunday, we got to get it on a Sunday. I can't say enough about this strategic planning company, committee. They're doing a great job. Yeah, it is like a company. And then the four administrators, that's the steering committee. But what we will be doing is reaching out to the other members of the community from the township and those different areas and forming little other committees to discuss things. So when you go to the forum, that's your place in this. When you go to the forum, you need to make your ideas and your opinions known and through the surveys and that's how you can get your voice heard. And then we'll be asking the other stakeholders to do, specific stakeholders, say for the township committee, they'll be prioritizing those things that they've heard in the forum with the Princeton company. And so that's how this is going to work. And but the final decision will be voted on by the Board of Education, of course, the Middletown officials. And I just want to make sure that everybody's clear as to that process.
So board members, because this is a board presentation, are there any questions from the board?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I have three items on tonight's workshop for information only. The first item is our summer technology support help desk. Once again, this summer, we'll be maintaining a support desk for students who have their devices that they took home in the summer, so high school population. Last year, it worked really well. The next thing is to come in with issues and questions. Again, we'll be maintaining that help desk. It'll be maintained for four hours on a Tuesday and we're going to rotate it between north and south weekly basis. We're going to advertise hours and times through social media and our website soon. The second item is 2019 Google for education promotion. As a district, that purchases a lot of technology equipment and a great number of Chromebooks each year. We have been afforded a great opportunity by Google. They're providing us with a free six-month subscription to a service called Mobile Mind. Mobile Mind is a modern professional learning hub that allows a professional learning, personalized professional learning for G Suite and other online tools. The offer is extremely valuable as a normal course, which would cost around $40 per teacher, per course. So we plan to take advantage of this. The last thing on the agenda for tonight is our summer technology projects, if you want to update you. Starting today, we actually started some of our summer projects, which include Windows 10 upgraded every single PC within our district because Windows 7 is obviously coming into life this year. We were beginning our interactive flat panels, relations across all of our schools. We were preparing our sixth and ninth grade Chromebook deployments as well as reconfiguring our network to allow for our new high school BYOD initiative. We're obviously going to have our interns work on the inspection repair of all of our returned Chromebooks for repurposing them as well. We are in the process of setting up and configuring our new K2 devices. All kindergarten classes will receive six new iPads. All first and second classrooms will receive six Chromebooks. We're installing a new help desk solution that'll help us make us a little more efficient as well as it'll allow us to perform more reports on the day-to-day tasks. We're installing a VM and cloud backup server district-wide that'll help reduce costs of our backup costs and as well as make it more efficient as well. All these projects, or most of these projects to say, will have our new interns will have an impact on it, as if they did last year. So hopefully bringing them on board on July 8th will have great, great success. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to student services.
We're going to be recommending 43 students for home instruction. Four students for out-of-district placement, 23 students for continued out-of-district placement. We're recommending one settlement agreement. We're also requesting the approval to eliminate Learning Language Disability Class at Thompson Middle School for the next school year. We're also requesting approval of tuition contracts for the following students to attend Middletown Schools. And we're also requesting acceptance of the federal grant, the IDA grant for the 2020 school year. Just wanted to give the board the update regarding ESY. Right now, it looks like we have about 169 students for elementary, 143 for secondary. It's going to be about 34 teachers, number of related service providers, about 51 power professionals in district and 52 external power professionals. Staff, administration, Ms. Shrek and Ms. Simmons have had meetings with Mr. White, Mr. McGuire, along with Mr. Ferry and Mr. Schramm. We had our monthly CPAG meeting on May 31st. We discussed professional development. We discussed the presentation that our department did at the Mid-Atlantic Conference for Personalized Learning. We discussed the articulation for students going from fifth to sixth grade as well as from eighth to ninth grade and how staff meet and work together in meeting student needs. Some items we didn't get to from student services. We did talk about the new director that's replacing me as well as the change of responsibilities with the three other administrators in student services. We talked about building changes for students with disabilities, the change in locations for the LLD class. A little bit of notes. And we did talk about a leadership program that we were going to be doing for extracurricular and co-curricular activities at the high school level, more from a peer leadership to get those students that are shy and kind of want to stay in the background. And we felt that this really wasn't just for special ed students because sometimes special ed students may excel in some of these co-curricular, extracurricular activities. It could be leaders themselves there. So we felt it was just a good opportunity for all students to take on a leadership role and help those students that are a little bit more shy and kind of want to stay in the background and just try to get more participation at the secondary level. So we spoke to Mr. Carroll, Mr. Renello, Ms. Walker, and we're going to be working on that project for next year. We talked about, we also completed the Unified Sports Grant for the 2019-20 school year. So that'll involve a number of different things that Mr. Renello and Mr. Carroll will be working on, along with my successor. Okay, any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Why, why do you think the number of outside power professionals is so high?
I think just because, like I said, we did change the rate to the power professionals. I think for the past couple of years, we've had about the same amount of power professionals, both external and internal. And this year, there was a significant change in pay and rate. I think it was 1250 and we went up to $15.
So we have more outside than inside?
Yes, and it's been, it's been like that for the past couple of years.
I just want to bring that to our, you know, continuity.
Yes, and I think maybe next year, we'll, we're hoping for more.
And then a question about the LLD class at Thompson. Because there was a lot of talk on the street about the kids were only told the day before they were supposed to go visit. Is there any truth to that?
No, there was, there was phone calls maybe either by administration or by the case managers regarding that. And it was made several, it was made probably at least a week in advance.
Okay, because there's a lot of talk on the street about that and I just wanted to clarify that, you know, some of the things you hear isn't always accurate, but what they were saying was the kids were told the day before they were devastated and that they were told that this was a budget cut. So I was curious if it was a budget cut, should we have told them or you have to re-improve the budget?
I think we were still looking at utilization of resources and effectively managing our resources and again, sharing it to the class of four students. And again, so when that class can go to 16, it was kind of a challenge to have, you know, we can have a greater learning opportunity in a larger class.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I understand that smaller class size, but my concern was, my concern, if there, if it really happened that way, you're saying it didn't, is how the kids were notified.
It was, it was a tight timeframe, but we also, we also discussed, the simple fact is, do we have them go to the one school we were proposing? Do we let them go to Thompson and then we're setting up a proposal? So it was kind of a, it's kind of like I think of, give a benefit to them.
You know, I wouldn't want them to go to the school. They're not going to.
Because I think, you know, and again, communicating with the parents.
Because I would hope, you know, you'd notify them.
And I can't really talk a lot, a lot more because it's a small amount of students and it's probably.
Yeah, no, I'm just telling you what's out on the street and I wanted to get some clarification on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
If I could, before we start, I would just like to say that I was asking on your end, saying July is not going to be easy for us as administrative team. You have our respect and support moving forward in your career. You have been a valued team member as part of our central office administrative team and we're going to miss you. We're happy for your three stoplight commute and we believe that you're probably going to be making a lot of times on your bike and we're happy for that too. Your reduction in workload, you know, you've earned it, you deserve it, but no, you will be missed, Bob.
I appreciate the opportunity that Middletown Board has given everybody's support and providing services and special assistance in Middletown. So I appreciate everybody's.
That's those hot holes on your butt.
Moving on to curriculum.
Okay, so I'll just echo for a second. On behalf of the curriculum department, it's been great working with you, Dr. Mr. Dunn. You and I have known each other for almost 25 years, working together. We appreciate the support your department's always given us and the collaboration that we've always enjoyed. So thank you, good luck. So thank you, good luck. Here we are. Okay, so Mrs. Caruso is here to talk about the additional feedback from some of our curricula that we implemented this year, that we advised you of last month we would have as a follow-up.
As we do every year, at the end of the first year of implementing new curricula, we get feedback from the staff members who taught that curricula, so that we can see how it went, if there's anything we need to tweak or modify, et cetera. There were forty-one new courses put in place last year, mostly because there was such a high number because of the new middle school schedule and the new electives, et cetera, we put in place then. So we gathered all that feedback, my summer honest at all, the directors got it from all the departments, and I put it into the board portal, so you could see it before today, because I knew you couldn't go over it all tonight, that's a lot to ask. Anyway, you need to know that proactively, the directors have already started addressing some of the suggestions and recommendations made. A lot of it was asking just for articulation, not so much changes to the curricula that's already been put in place, but articulation between the staff members, so they can share resources and ideas after their first year of their limitations. It's going very well. So if you have any questions about that, feel free to ask, you know, or I can relay to any of the directors, anything you might want to ask. That's the first thing. Did you want to talk about this?
Yeah. So, we are going to be, as a voting item next week, adding onto the agenda a recommended memorandum of understanding with the Keensburg School District. This will allow our school district to expand the opportunities and programs that we currently offer students, to include those that are different, that Keensburg has developed for their students. So for example, the agreement would allow us to send students to participate in Keensburg's high school law enforcement pathway. We had a student actually this year, here at High School North, a senior, who did an independent learning opportunity, and elected to seek acceptance into their program. He was. And he's actually graduating, well, he graduated last night already with a job as a Class Three Officer, starting, I believe, today. So we have high hopes for the addition of this opportunity. It's one that we don't currently offer here in our district. So it will be a great way to expand those high school, especially those career readiness focus areas that we've been looking to expand upon. It would also give reciprocal opportunity to Keensburg students to participate in high school pathways and programs that we currently offer here, dual enrollment programs that we have numbers to somewhat sustain. You know, that's always a year-to-year, depending on enrollment, that they just don't have the student participation or enrollment to be able to afford to their students, or provide to their students in Keensburg. This is always with the understanding, as is noted in the agreement, that it's based on seat, vacancy of seats on both sides. It would never prevent one of our students from participating in the Middletown program, so they would always have first preference to a seat in a class in Middletown, prior to us opening up any available seats to students in Keensburg. And that would work for their program as well. The other program that Keensburg is including in the agreement is their Beacon Program. We would have the opportunity to send K-12 students who have progressed through our Behavioral Disabilities Program and are not meeting success, another option for placement into a public school Behavioral Disabilities Program, prior to requiring or seeking placement in and out of district, for example, private setting. So it just gives our parents one more option, and the special education teams the option to afford to parents. Any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, by the way, I just want to know, the student that was placed with a job as a Class Three Officer, where was he placed?
I believe it's Keyport. Yeah.
Thank you.
Correct, Mr. Renella?
Yeah.
I thought it was Keyport. Voting items? Anyone give it up?
If anybody wants a heart copy, the other thing that I put into the board portal, in addition to the thirty curriculum that we adopted this past May, at that time, we shared that there was one curriculum that was still being rewritten, because we were waiting for the college board to release some resources. They've been released, the curriculum is finished, and that one, AP World History Modern, appears on the agenda this month, okay? The materials for that are on your, will be on the voting meeting agenda to adopt, as well as the actual curriculum guide, which I put into the portal, so you can look at it with a brief summary, explaining the big difference, which is, Modern, believe it or not, starts in near twelve-hundred. Prior to this, years before that, we're studying that course. Now it's starting in twelve-hundred. And we have some nice new resources from the AP, from the college board, okay? I brought you two textbooks that are being adopted, if anybody wants to look at them. I promised Mrs. Kelly I'd get them back to her by tomorrow. She wants to have them for the summer to start working on the course. But if anybody would like it, can pass those around. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Are we, are you still doing curriculum, Mrs. Nicholas? Because I have a question. It's not on the agenda, but where are we with, I know New Jersey school boards had a big committee about bringing back the trades, and the Department of Education was working on it, where are we with that?
I'm glad you asked. We recently, a panel of building administrators, guidance counselors from our high school and middle schools, recently visited one of our community businesses, Harms Construction. We explored various opportunities with them a few weeks ago, and opportunities for students who are interested in trades, to be able to partner with Harms as internships, both paid and voluntary, also as extensions for their senior career portfolio class that they can enter into here in both High School North and High School South. So that's one opportunity that we're already opening up. As we've discussed, I think, a couple of times this year, we are looking at other community business partnerships to expand our offerings for internships, because that's really what our students are telling us they're looking for, is real-world workplace experience. They learn in a classroom, they learn a lot of skills and knowledge, and are looking to employ them in a real-world setting. So that's something that our SLE program continues to look to expand for both special education and general education students.
Do you know about how many students they accommodated?
Well, they were very dissatisfied with the turnout. They mentioned to us that they can accommodate many students countywide. They, I think they told us they had either three or four countywide to pursue the options they made available to students. So we've already talked to them about bringing students, we're having the guidance counselors bring students there for the tour that we went on, to have it explained to them what opportunities exist. The one thing with a company like Harms, and I'm just using them as an example, we have many other community partners that we're looking to expand this with, they have multiple types of trades in their one facility. We were amazed. You know, there's automotive, there's construction, there's architecture, there's engineering. So it's students who are looking for immediate career-type settings, or something that they know they're going to have to go to college and obtain a degree, and then be able to enter into a field, which was really, we thought, would meet a variety of our students' needs. So according to them, they have many openings, they only had three or four applicants countywide this year. So we're looking to take advantage of the fact that they have openings, and our guidance counselors will immediately in September be working with students to bring them there, to show them the opportunities, and start that process to get them enrolled.
How do we advertise to the students and the parents?
That's something that, I know Mrs. Nicholas was with us, and Mr. Renella are going to work out with the guidance counselors, to work through that process.
Because there's so many parents that were asking for it and had an interest in it, and I just wonder how we're gonna get that word out, so that they know that there's something in the works.
Yeah, that's something we talked about after we visited there, I think it was two or three weeks ago, is working with the principals, with the guidance counselors, with Ms. Nicholas. Are we doing it through an aviance? Are we gonna have a meeting? Are they gonna call, allow, do it during advisory, and let kids know to give more information? So they're working through that, I know, you know, right now, to have something in place for September.
Where is their hall board?
Uh, Howell.
In Howell?
Mm-hmm. It's actually, I think, Coltsnap, like, it's on the border.
Okay, and these students are high school students, probably seventeen years old, or younger?
No, it's mainly seniors.
It's seniors?
Yes.
Last month, we reviewed the curriculum. Some of that curriculum had to do with things like bathroom and kitchen remodel, and things like that. So how do we take what a George Harms department, and make sure that we're bringing something in from the backend, so that these kids are sitting in that architectural class and go, hey, maybe I can spend time here, and then spend time there?
Yeah, so one of the things we talked about was field trips. So if they take a class, the teacher takes them to a, again, I don't want to just harp on Harms, but it's one that came to mind, but they take them to Harms. And there are a lot of times that sophomores and juniors were enrolled in those classes, those types of left it, not just seniors. So it's another way to open their eyes, they can then take the opportunity, whether there is a, on a field trip, to explain the opportunities that are available to them, and when they become seniors, or internships. So that was something we also discussed.
And they won't take, they won't take seniors?
My understanding was, it was seniors, yes. It is a, it is a working facility, they have to make sure that students are age-appropriate. My understanding was in the summer, that they were open to more opportunity to talk about younger students, but I think the focus was seniors, yeah. Again, because they have to have the time, too, because a lot of their coursework is completed, the prereq coursework's. So they have the time to be able to do it, the senior flex option, to sign out of school to go do, because again, they're open during the day. You know, a lot of these businesses are open during, when schools are open. So you have to have a lot of your coursework done to be able to sign out, to go then work in the field.
Yeah, because when we had the shops, it was open to sophomores and juniors also. And a lot of kids took advantage of that, because they're exploring what it is that they wanna do.
Yeah, and the good news is, is that a lot of the kids are taking those classes like architecture, aerospace and design types of courses Mr. Donovan just mentioned, as sophomores and juniors. So they're getting that prerequisite knowledge, but then they're ready as seniors to apply.
Okay, moving on to facilities and finance.
Other than facilities, we have, sorry, summer project, baby, now that school is over, I was told you still have teachers that are going to be around for a couple days without me, but we are looking to tackle a list of things that, after the summer, maintenance items, cleaning, you know, some floor finishing, things like that. Our biggest project that we're doing is, of course, on High School North, a touring project, which is starting now, the installation of the lighting and the sound of your roof door. So that will, that will be going on all summer. Again, you know, in July, we'll be able to give you a progress list on how things are going, but the school just ended, so we're just kind of getting started on things. As far as voting agenda items go, we have a property lease agreement with the township for Lynncroft, building, our building over Lynncroft that they use for one of their programs. And that's a five-year agreement. We rent it to them for a dollar a year, they do all the maintenance and upkeep on it. So it's a mutual, mutually beneficial partnership, they get to use building, and then they don't have anything that they're caring for, does still retain ownership of the property. We have also a change order on the agenda, it's actually a reduction in the debt that we awarded for the storm drain repair here at High School North, after getting the EDP permit, it was actually something that we took out of the scope for upon their recommendation or their stipulation, so we are reducing the bid by eighty-nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars. So that's those are the items we have in our facilities. We did have a finance committee meeting, it was actually one committee, facilities and finance, but we focused on finance for this month, we'll focus on facilities next month. So, Mr. Moon, do you want to do an update, or you want to be here?
Hey, we just had a little bit of time after we were employed, and it shows more of a brand. Folks at the financial teams are close to online, it's very interesting, a lot of schedules and schedules, you know, it's a lot of stuff to go through, very interesting information. And we sort of got some of these items on here, just the liability insurance, we talked about the copiers and things, I think, by the, we just had a lot of time on financial information. There were a couple of things here I don't think that we actually discussed, I don't think we talked about, and I don't think we talked about transportation detail by default.
We have, right, we have a few items on the voting agenda for next week, in addition to the financial reports that we do monthly, we have some other resolutions regarding contract renewals, and our annual transfer appropriations that we do that will allow the board, if available, to make a deposit into a capital reserve channel at the end of the year. We also will have the renewal of our liability insurance policies. We are still waiting on what that amount will be, I spoke to our broker yesterday, they are heavily negotiating with the Jersey school boards on our behalf, so we don't have a final number on that, as soon as we do, we will fill that in on the agenda. We also discussed the renewal of the food service management contract with Witsins, as we are second year under our contract. As you recall, we awarded it for the first time for this year. We can move up to four renewals under this contract, so this will be the first renewal. We did review with the committee what the contract was going to entail for next year. We will have a slight increase in the meal rate that gets charged to the district, it's capped by the CPI that governs the food service increases. So we have a two percent increase in our meal rate for next year, that we will be paying Witsins for the meals. Our guarantee amount that we have in the contract, we have the guarantee of the third year, and that's a guarantee profit return to the district's food service operation, which we then use to invest into the repairs and replacements of equipment and facilities in that area. It's a hundred-and-ninety thousand for this year, for next year it's gonna be a hundred-and-eighty thousand. One of the drivers of the reduction in that is the fact that we have to account for the increase in the minimum wage for next year, which was, will be taking place. We also have a few less service days than what we had originally planned, what we did in the contract, because of early lease days that were not serving life. So with those couple of items, there is a bit of a change there. We are looking to increase the meal prices for lunch and breakfast. For lunch, we will be going at fifteen cents, so the proposed lunch prices at the elementary school, middle school, and high school will be three dollars, three-twenty-five, and three-fifty. And also for breakfast, we will be going at twenty-five cents, to a dollar-twenty-five, a dollar-fifteen, and a dollar-fifty. But overall, those are the major components of that contract.
Question. You said the cost of the, of the, is going up two percent?
We pay, our main payment with Witsins is a fixed cost contract, so we pay them per meal. So the price that we pay per meal is going up two percent.
Okay, so we'll be, so that will be two percent, but that doesn't equate with the fifteen cents, like, the raise in the prices of the lunch.
Right, well, we pay them, well, not only a meal rate, but we also, you know, have to pay them a management fee to run the program for us. They run our food service program, they, they run the program. So we pay for them to do that.
Just wanted to correlate the revised fees. Thank you.
Are we sticking with my school bucks as the payment vendor?
We are not planning on making any changes in the POS and the platform for parent payments. Just implemented that last year, so.
I just want to say something about the food service. We toured around, no, that's not, oh, sorry for me. We toured around at least twelve schools, maybe fourteen, we went to see quite a few. Our kitchens are spotless, I've never seen them look so good. The food is wonderful, the service that they're doing with our little kids, our students getting their service, a little bit slower, because they're learning the system, but they're really unbelievable. The people are courteous, they're nice, they care about our kids, the high school students, you know, some of the middle school students wanted different food, a few other choices, but our kitchens could only accommodate certain things. But it was wonderful, big difference, just so you know.
We also, we also talked about, when we went through Dasher, we felt that they had less choices than we have in two middle schools, so we're looking in to see what we can do about, you know, about that why it is a smaller space, so there's not as much room to put out the spread, but maybe there's another way that we can do it. We looked, we also looked at Nutswamp's Kitchen, and they definitely need to, um, help Uh, we looked, we also looked at, um, Nutswarm's kitchen, and, and they definitely need to, um, have more space.
Yes.
So, um, you know, if that's somewhere in the future, it's not going to be this summer, but somewhere in the future, I think that's the address, which is where it's at, elementary school. And if you walk into the kitchen, you can't turn from one spot to the other to complete the tray down. You really have more room, um, to be able to prepare that much food. They do a lot of food. Each school that we went to, because they're saying that their, um, participation rate is going up, and they're going to find ways to advertise it more in September through the parents and the PTAs. Maybe if the parents see that the quality of food is, is really good, like, you know, the parents that aren't out and it's going up, we can get even more kids to participate in the school lunch program. It was nice to see the fresh vegetables and the kids having choices. We all know kids are not crazy about vegetables, but, um, we did see the kindergartners pick them and eat them.
Broccoli.
Broccoli was a big thing.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we listened to some of the concerns that, um, people had, but it just, you know, especially with our kindergartners and the height things, the height weights, but they seem to be adjusting to that just fine, with no issues there. So, um, for an overall first year, I think that they've done an excellent job, you know, having to come in what they did late in the year and, um, set up and table up. I think they've done a great job there.
I just want to circle back to Mr. Donovan's question. Um, that's our, our food service operation, that's not the only, this isn't the only costs involved. The district is responsible for maintaining and purchasing all of the equipment and everything that's involved with the kitchen. So that's another cost to the district as far as, you know, all the refrigerators, freezers, serving lines, ovens, that, that's all our equipment. So, you know, over seventeen schools, that's a lot to maintain, and we're constantly replacing and repairing. And so there are other costs that we absorb, you know, as part of our operations. So I just wanted to maybe shed some light on that. And unfortunately, all of our equipment is aging. So we are, you know, and, and replacing just one refrigerator, you know, is thousands of dollars. You know, so it's necessary, we need it, but it's costly. So it's all part of our operation.
In the finance facilities, we've also talked about the food service contract, the investments and all these different things, where that's being discussed. Um, so we think that the facilities finance would be talking about based on what the food services committee thinks, where that, that hundred eighty thousand dollars and all the equipment, because I don't think, that hasn't been discussed in facilities, it's like not facilities, but we talked, we are, you're on the, on a finance committee as well. I think we talked about what food services committee does versus what finance and facilities, because we need to talk about where that money goes. We mentioned Day Shore.
Right.
Mentioned Nutswarm, mentioned all of the equipment and how that's being monitored and who's working to get the straight on. So I think we felt that finance facilities would be a place where it'd be important for the food services committee, because it's an enterprise, right, so it makes money and reinvests in the program. So, well, yeah, it's a self-invested.
Oh, really not making, we're self-sustaining.
Not making money, but something to reinvest.
We're, right, it's a self-sustaining. But we were, we'll talk about it in the facilities, we haven't historically spoken about it.
We don't want to have to take money out of our budget to fund that. That has to be something that sustains itself.
We're using the money for food.
Um, another item that we'll have on the agenda next week for approval is our new copier lease agreement. That's another agreement that we do over five years that's expiringly here. Uh, we again went into a competitive process on that, using, uh, getting proposals from competitors that run the state contracts, so they already gone after bid. Uh, and as a result of that, uh, we actually are going to be realizing savings versus our budget amount for next year. Based on budget, uh, amount for next year on what we were currently paying. And, uh, because of savings on the maintenance agreement for the upcoming contract and the way that, you know, it's been structured with the replacement, you know, we're actually going to be, um, coming, you know, about a hundred thousand dollars less than what our current contract is. So that, you know, that will be carried forward then into the next five years. So that's, you know, that is actually a positive that, you know, pleasant surprise for us, so.
That's a place of all of them. How many others?
Ninety, ninety-two, ninety-three.
All of them.
Yes, yes, so. So we will have that on the agenda. Uh, we will also be, um, we also have an item on there, uh, for transportation. Actually, one of them, we're just updating the, me, uh, on the, uh, previously approved resolution to clarify, uh, the district that we're going to be, uh, joint-trading with. Uh, so we have that on the agenda. Uh, we also have, um, we'll be talking about, you know, we are finishing the process of putting together the evaluations from our staffing services RFP, uh, which we will be giving to the board on Friday with the recommendation for the staffing services that we've been collecting, you know, RFPs and that.
Maybe you can just start out now, let's see what's working.
Well, that, yeah, that is, that's another competitive contract that the board did authorize and we, um, we advertised for. And we received several proposals and they, you know, have been scored. Then we're putting together the points, you know, based on the rhetoric that was in the proposal. And we will be filling a report up on the website and giving it to the board as far as the, you know, had those points and when the board would be. And again, this was for substitute services, uh, for paraprofessionals, for teachers, and for secretaries and, uh, some, uh, regular parent assignments if we cannot staff it from our own recruiting efforts, so.
And that was administration, like, yes, all the administration.
Yes, yes, yes. So we will be forwarding that report to the board.
Okay, thank you, that's it. Moving on to student activities.
We just have a few, uh, voting items. We have the two thousand nineteen twenty athletic program and the NJ SIAA, um, uh, uh, membership information on there. It's something we do every year, so that we have, uh, our case and update in the NJ SIAA sports program. Uh, we will also have our security drill, state insurance, that's getting that old, our school gives you a security drill, um, as they should have reported to the law all year long, and we send that to state. And we also have a research study. Uh, one of our staff members is in a doctoral program at Monmouth, and they're going to be doing a study on an oval classroom, um, at the middle school, and they'll be surveying teachers and inviting students to other teachers' classrooms. You know, it's just, it's actually an initiative in the district right now. They're just sort of seeing the efficacy of that.
Can I have a question about that?
Yes.
That's going to be done during the school day, right?
The, the teachers will be visiting other teachers' classrooms during the school day, yes, because it has to happen, and it is already a district initiative. But what the real gist of the research study is, is to, to determine how effective that is on teacher practice. And that is done through interviews and surveys outside of the school day. So the work that, that the researcher is going to be doing is outside of the school day. The work that the teachers that are in the study are doing will be in the school day, but it's already an initiative in our school. She is just going to promote that initiative, uh, so that she'll get more teachers involved, so she can study how well this does impact teaching and learning in our buildings.
I just want to, I just want to give my personal opinion on this. I'm glad you're clarifying that, because I have a problem with someone taking a course that will be unable to do the, the, the research on our time, when they have a job and they should be doing something else. That's what my issue is with this. So if it's being done outside after school, I don't have a problem with it.
The researcher's work is outside.
And removing them from the job that we've assigned them to, I have a problem with that.
And we don't do that, our research guys don't do that.
Are we ready for the, uh, physicals? For the full sports?
Yes. There we are, Dave, I'll be ready.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is shared services. Um, for shared services, this month, we postponed until July. I postponed until July because we had not many items on the agenda, and we figured we can take care of it in July. Um, Mrs. Stella and myself will be at the groundbreaking ceremony tomorrow with the township committee, and, uh, we feel like we can connect with them tomorrow night as well. And so with that, we're moving on to old business.
Yeah, did the whole board get invited to the, um, groundbreaking? Because when they asked about the date, we were told the whole board was invited, but we didn't get the invitation.
I, I, I don't know, I got an invitation, and Mrs. Stella got an invitation, and Deputy Mayor Fury told me that the two of us were getting invited. I don't remember him saying that everyone was getting invited. Yeah, I can follow up on that?
No, that's fine, it's fine. He had already told me the date and everything, so.
Well, you're certainly welcome to attend.
Yes, well, we can come from our board, so. Just curious. Um, I have a question about legislation, and I'm going to address it to you, because I haven't heard that there was a mini-meet. But we work with the, um, coalition, coalition of schools, right? They stand behind certain, um, bills that the legislation is working on. There's a bill out there about, um, being able to privatize positions. Has our district taken any stance on any of the legal bills? Legal, um, bills that they're going to put through Senate Assembly?
Privatize which positions? Can you be more specific?
Yeah, privatize teachers, uh, not teachers, substitutes, like we're doing now. We, I know when we voted on this, we did it just because we, we don't want to not hire the people that we have. But I think other districts are doing it because they want to completely privatize. And that's not where we were looking to go. So I'm curious, if they're fighting on our behalf, did somebody give them permission, or are we not standing behind that? Because I would hope that the board would have a say in something that, you know, we're going to stand, any bills that we're going to stand behind.
Right, um, no, we, uh, the Corbin State Coalition is, we're on brush, right? And, um, you know, I know I'm speaking to my colleagues that every district is different and their needs are different. And so there are certain, uh, things that, um, that affect school districts differently, and that's how they actively get behind and, um, seek, uh, direct support from the local legislators and state legislators. Uh, the only thing that we have done that way, um, as everyone is aware, um, I, the communications that I have given, um, is the, is the support of, um, special education funding, specifically extraordinary aid, um, as well as, um, social emotional. Uh, we, we have, we have actually solicited support for social emotional learning, um, specifically also, um, as it relates to suicide prevention and other programs that impact social emotional learning. Those are the only areas that we actually solicited support or participated in anything related to.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that they don't, you know, loop us into a category that, oh, Middletown stands behind this bill, because there's another bill that I read about coaching, where their, um, coalition says they're not behind it, but they're, they're willing to work with the founders of the bill. And the bill was that, um, coaching members would get a three-year contract over top of teachers getting a one-year contract. And I would hope that this board would not stand behind that, because teachers should come before coaches when we're hiring. So, you know, if they're pushing this bill and they're fighting for this bill, I just don't want our names to be associated with these bills if the whole board didn't agree to do that.
Anything that we participate with, do, I'm sorry, anyone?
No, that's fine.
Um, uh, anything that we participate with, anytime that I reach out to legislators, I also go through the legislative committee, and I, uh, we share that information after requesting the legislative committee.
Yeah, I, I just want to make that clear, because it just, you know, with this bill out there about the privatizing and us going out looking for, um, substitutes because we absolutely need them, I don't want people to mix it up that we're, we're behind the privatization bill when really we're just looking to make sure that we have our kids covered and the proper help and the jobs filled that we need.
And I just want to clarify that any kind of position you're taking would be collectively done as a board, so if you're not aware of it, no position has been taken.
Just want to make sure.
Okay, thank you. So is there any more, uh, is there any more old business? Okay, moving on to new business. There's, uh, so many great things that have been going on the past couple of weeks. Um, I went to the Arts Academy event, that was fantastic. It was their first, uh, big spring showcase, it was wonderful. Um, I also attended the Grand Slam Poetry. Um, that was very exciting to see the kids speak their own words, um, not just reciting other people's words. It was really interesting. Um, I attended graduations as well as Mrs. Stella. Mrs. Stella and myself were able to attend the graduations for the past couple of days. And, um, Mrs. Minnie Wees and Mr. Donovan were there with me. And it was just a beautiful, wonderful experience, very positive. Um, I also went to the River Plaza Band Concert, which is one of my adopted schools. Um, and there were also fifth grade events at River Plaza. The theme was a beach theme. And Ocean Avenue School that I also adopted was an outer space theme. So there's just, um, a lot of great things going on in the district right now. It's a really positive time, and I think it's a good time to focus on the positive. I know that a lot of times we focus on, um, you know, debating each other, and things can get a little negative. It's, it's nice to hear about the positive things in the district too.
Yeah, I just want to, that, that's, come on, you can do it. Come on, microphone, yeah. So, um, just to, uh, sort of, just sort of lead into, see, it's, um, just sort of lead into what you were saying, my adopted school is Middletown South. Um, and I attended their end-of-year film festival, uh, featuring, um, what was it? It was almost thirty student films, uh, including yet another showing of Sonic Highways. Anybody who hasn't seen Sonic Highways, uh, should definitely seek it out. It's a wonderful, uh, documentary about Middletown. Um, but again, it's, it's a great example of what our students are able to accomplish given the resources that we provide them as a board, uh, the creativity that they have, the perseverance to get their films done, um, because these are, these are projects for schools, where they have deadlines, uh, they manage the, the rest of the workload, um, and, uh, and they get these films done and polished off, they'll look great. I think Mr. Corey, uh, does a fantastic job over there at South.
Do they get a grade on it?
Yes, they do. Um, and, and one thing to add, I know that we're always looking at where our students go after school. So we have two students, uh, who have careers now, uh, two former students of Mr. Corey's, who have careers in the film industry, uh, in the video industry, come back and acted as judges. Uh, so it's nice to see Middletown students come back, uh, support current students, um, hand out some very nice awards, so it all adds a great, like, five bucks, well spent.
Anybody, the business, new business? Um, okay, I would like to open the microphone to public comment.
I would just like to remind everyone, it is thirty minutes, um, and I'm going to be timing, and, uh, three minutes per person. And the other thing I want to remind everyone is pursuant to board policy, if you've already spoken on a particular topic, um, you may not speak again until everybody else has spoken.
Erica LaCazy.
It'll, it'll, it needs some more hot water, there you go. Green light, you're good.
Uh, Erica LaCazy, I took her to Nutswarm. And just wanted to thank Sir Franco for encouraging the public to stay and see the presentation on the strategic planning, because, um, we do come to the meetings and I see what, how important it's an important opportunity for us to be a part of the solution in pursuit of improvement in our school community, and, um, and it's very important. So thank you for encouraging people to stay. And, um, I just wanted to say that attending public meetings, I think, would have put the issue of the before and after care on parents' radar a little bit earlier. And, um, I know it's really difficult to come to these meetings, but they are live streams now, which, um, helps, which I do believe is born from the last strategic planning that he did, so. I just wanted to point that out. Um, I do, I did want to talk about the removal of the LLT Plaza Thompson. Um, I know that it was, um, it was mentioned that there were only four students in the program, but, um, I couldn't help but think about the future children from the elementary schools at the end to Thompson and, um, going to their home schools, going to their, being in their school community for five years, kindergarten through fifth, and then being moved with brand-new kids during middle school, which is such a vulnerable time in the child's life, I think, with. Um, and regarding phone calls, whether they were the day before or... And regarding phone calls, whether they were the day before or a couple of weeks before, to me, doesn't really matter. That phone call should never be placed, telling a parent that their child's going to be moved to another school with completely new children. That should have been done in a meeting with the parent being involved, so that other options possibly could have been discussed. And I lastly just want to make the point that we all remember the redistricting, redistricting board meeting, where so many parents and community members came, they were outraged at the possibility that their child would be taken away from their home school communities and moved to a new school. And here we are doing that very thing to this small, vulnerable population, and nobody is here. We did this to elementary students at Nada Think, and I'm really disappointed to see that it's being done again on the backs of our children in self-contained classes. Thank you.
Yeah, it's green, you're good.
Got it, I have the green. Okay. Hi, Rachel Knopka. I have a bunch of things, so I'm going to jump as fast as I can, knowing the time limits, because I wasn't able to make last, last month's meeting. But on May 22nd, I was able to go to the school safety presentation that was at Central Office on behalf of Nutzbaum, and Nikki Francis did a presentation on vaping. I know, Mike, you were there, I saw you there. It was scary in the best way. Like, it was amazing what she was able to communicate to me, and I'm embarrassed to say, my two current, now just graduated sixth graders didn't do Project Plus as fifth graders because it conflicted with their soccer schedule, so I couldn't make it work. And I was kicking myself for not just having them skip soccer to go, because the stuff that she conveyed and the way she conveyed it was so powerful and honestly terrifying, but in a way that really educated me and got me to talk to my kids about it. I did follow up with Mrs. Walker over email, just trying to figure out, is there a way to get that curriculum into the school day? Because I think having it as an after-school activity really limits its reach, and I have to imagine that if more kids were exposed to it, maybe down the road, hopefully there'd be less kids even trying some of these substances. I also think trying to find a way to force parents to see that presentation. I know, can't force anybody to do anything, but I know that one was recorded. If there's a way to really push parents to watch this thing, it was so powerful. So I just wanted to thank the district for inviting Nikki Francis to do this on an ongoing basis. I think it's an amazing program, and we just got to get more people exposed to it. It was, it was really, really powerful, started a lot of conversations with me and my kids at home, so thank you for that. Second thing is, on behalf of infinite love for kids fighting cancer, I wanted to say thank you to the district, and also specifically to Dr. George, Mr. Leoni, Mr. Bimbo, and Mrs. McCormick for participating in this SHAVE fundraiser event, which happened last weekend. For those of you who don't know, the organization was founded by a Middletown mom, Andrea Gorsegner, whose daughter is a leukemia survivor. So after her daughter was diagnosed, she founded this organization to raise money to fund pediatric cancer research grants and also financial assistance grants to families whose kids have cancer. And to date, she's raised over a million bucks that has gone back to mostly research, but also these financial assistance grants, and it's phenomenal. And she's a Middletown mom and being able to now work with the Middletown Schools to get the message out. We also were able to do an awareness and fundraising campaign through the elementary and middle schools in May, which was phenomenal. So I just wanted to say thank you very, very much, especially to you, Dr. George, and to the principals who got really involved. Thank you. I bet you're going to appreciate it when it gets hot. I like having this here. On strategic planning, the one thought I had, just in terms of trying to really get more people to participate, I know I saw the letter that the district sent out, we're sharing it with the Nutzbaum communities, get the principals to push it out, a lot, because I know like through the remind system, through the emails, et cetera, parents see those things, they read them, they hear them, they listen to them, those are really powerful. And also, if you really want to get in front of the parents, have it be like a pop-up before you get to your schedule or your teacher assignment in Power School in August. Nobody will miss it. If it's something that pops up when you go to check your kid's teacher assignment that says, hey, you should know the district is doing this, and you have to click okay before you're taking your kid's schedule, everybody will know about it.
It's up?
Okay. I'll email, I have a lot of things. Thank you, guys. Okay, it's like a half hour's time, I'm sorry.
Anybody else? Push the button if it turns green, then it's on.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Mary Beth Pauls-Brice-Lack, and I'm the co-founder of Hope for Children Foundation. We're an organization out in Monmouth County. Me and two of my friends that grew up in Middletown and went to the Middletown School District, started it 17 years ago. And immediately after we started it, we realized the need for all of these nonprofits to work together. There was so much more needed that we could do. And I'm sure you're aware of Hope for Children, we're a big supporter of the Middletown School System. We work with Aunt Pepper Doan, who she just spoke about, and so many different charities in, in Monmouth County and throughout the state. And I'm here today because we partner with the YMCA. And I just wanted to get it out there, I think it's so important, all of the different organizations, and I work with so many, at Christmas time, we're doing everything we can for your students. When there's a house fire, we're in there with the Rain Foundation and Middletown Hudson Zone and all of these different organizations checking in to help these families. And without the nonprofits, I think that a lot of the school systems would be in trouble because we all help them. So I think that it's so important, as you go out to bid for the Y, and you go out to bid for anything, that you take that really into consideration and look at what all the nonprofits are doing for the school system and the children of our community. That's why we started Hope for Children, because we felt so fortunate to live in Middletown and to grow up in Middletown. And, you know, we started it, and I've been on both sides. I have been giving through Hope for Children for 17 years, but I also have lost a son to cancer. I lost a son to a pulmonary hemorrhage. I have a husband that has a malignant brain tumor. And I've also had all of these organizations reach out to me and try to support me. So I've been on both sides of the fence, the giving and the receiving, and it's so important to these families that are your families and our families. So I just want to, as you're deciding what to do with the YMCA and all bids for that matter, I just want you to take into consideration how important these nonprofits are to our community and how much we rely on them and need them. So that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
If the light is green, then it's working.
Hello, my name is Regina McMyne. I'm a parrot at New Monmouth School. Al does not here, but I work with him all the time. He's a great guy, we're going to miss him. He brought up a, I'm really good for the Y. I worked there, too. It's good. It is better than it used to be, I have to be honest, but they are improving, so I do hope to give them a chance. I also usually work the ESY program. This is my first year, and about 10, I'm not going to work it. Hi, Bob. And I really do miss it, but the raise that you gave or the compensation that you, the board or whoever gives it out, it was great three years ago. And if you look at your numbers, I don't know, like 50/50 or 52 out and 52 in, whatever, they're kind of close. I don't know how you can see the consistency in our most vulnerable children if most of these people aren't here and don't know the kids, the teachers and the powers. I like to work with the same kids I like to work, and I worked in many, many different classes. The consistency, you're going to have to really look at your program. Obviously, there's something wrong if you have more outside people who don't know these kids like the inside people do. And I'm not the only one, I'm sure, who work. I do have to make a living, and you're compensating the same amount of money to the people who are outside as inside. And it's a little slap on the wrist. I'd love to do it, but sure, I'm not coming. I hope next year you found some compensation. I hope next year you find a little bit more. And I know I'm the first one signing up. We're all going to miss you. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, how is everybody? Thank you very much for everything that you do. My name is Nicole Devaney, I live in Leonardo. It's funny that you put on that presentation right after we just had the big talk about the before and after care, because some of the words that you had mentioned, you said that you were very disappointed, you didn't want to be disappointed if everybody walked out. And I know that I was actually disappointed three seconds before you made that speech, because after we poured our heart out to you guys, told you about our financial worlds, about the sense of community that we all have, that you just went and I feel like didn't give our option even a thought. Some of the words you mentioned in the presentation were being open-minded, community, everybody gets heard, being transparent, and you want our input, but I feel like maybe you just want our input when it's, when it's convenient. Why not extend the contract one more year? I know coming, I'm a teacher, I don't get paid in the summer months, so my finances during the summer are very strict, I have a strict budget. How do I know I can afford the before and after care come September? I don't know if I can. I know with the YMCA, the fee is what it was last year, and I make a point to have that money, but I don't know what the fees are going to be for the new company. I was very disappointed that after we all poured our hearts out, in three and a half seconds, you turned around and just said that you weren't going to do the same thing that you did before we told our stories. Thank you very much for your time, and I know being on Board of Education is a very tedious job, and I really do appreciate it. Appreciate everything you do for my children, all of our children throughout the whole year. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Peter Rosario, and for the last six weeks, form has become my favorite new word. I'm a former school board president and former school board commissioner, so I appreciate your service. If you get to say former school board president, you're going to smile for weeks. You know, the only thing I could add to everything that was said, and I can tell you because I was in Lori's shoes four years ago when I started in Ocean County, you got a lot of things you have to address. And the one thing you don't get in an RFP is that we make decisions on the fly for the community. I invested over $400,000 for one of my programs, because I started talking to the districts and saying, what do we need to make this work? What do we need to make this work? And every district has a different answer. I have four. You don't get that in our policies. So I just want to point that out, that you have in your policy, so I started as a parent advocate, so I was the parent who went and said, look, you have a policy, 7510. It says, community-based organizations are the third preferred facility used to be. Private companies are dead last, right? There's a lot of, there's a lot of things in there, there's a reason for that. There's a wisdom behind what school districts do this time, because we put our buildings up for sale, we're going down the road, but we can't go back. So I would encourage you, I'm personally committing, that I'll send in immediately, because that's how firmly we believe that we're partners. First thing we did was gave Councilman Services over there. They said, we don't have it, well, never going to be able to do it, we need to do it. Whatever it needs to take, that's to get, we're a community-based partner, that we can bring everything to the table that we need to bring to make sure that we're working in partnership. So thank you, and again, thank you for your service. I appreciate it. Terrence Wall, uh, sorry, Terrence, sorry, here's my. We can hear him. Terrence Wall, hi. Terrence Wall, a guest, I'll be very quickly, quickly speak here, a couple of things, just for the edification of board, which I'm sure you already know, but the community, the timeframes are probably all along the lines of if you can get your advertisement in by Friday, not likely, but if you could, you'll probably have a return date about, on or about July 15th. That's, most of mine is 20 days. Your next meeting would be July, if you can fit your interviews in, your, your committee, your meet, get your rubber together, assuming that would be fair and equitable, of course, but get that together, then you'd meet and perhaps be able to make a decision towards end of July, that would be the most aggressive timeframe. And then if you have a late July award, then you would be sequencing your enrollments, I would imagine, somewhere, sometime in August. I just, I'm just sharing that, you know, with you, and we're going with that, are two specific things. The one thing that was interesting, that it would be great to hear the reason why, unless it's an executive session item, is why the item would have been tabled today at all, was in the design and the execution or some other reason, or maybe a pragmatic approach based on the inputs and thought processes from your constituents. So it'd be, it'd be very, very good, and I would ask that the superintendent would state for the record, why the item was withdrawn tonight or tabled tonight. The only other thought I'd leave with you is to consider, your June 26th meeting, to the extent you receive any other inputs from, from your public, your constituents, your user groups, your parents, and the children that they're caring for, is to consider modifying the date of the resolution of your past, of this evening, to move it to the 2021 year as an item on your agenda for your June 26th meeting for the Board of Education. That way, you can carry on your process, process, if you're deliberative, you can be collaborative, have an informed approach, look through the many and varied lenses that have been presented tonight from your various user groups and parents, and have a decision that you feel comfortable, proud, and sure of, with a level of certainty for your user groups, so you're not having disruption for the children and the parents, and of course, the board and administration, who has to carry out the direction of the board that they serve. So I would just consider moving the date to the 2021 calendar year as an Aijed item on your resolution, modifying that date at your June 26th meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing nobody else come to the mic, I'd like a motion to adjourn this meeting. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
Let's go with holes, holes. I've got work all day.
Thank you, thank you for coming.